I like it. Oh, we don't have, oh, sorry. Hello, thank you. Welcome to the special meeting of the Board of Education. Today is Tuesday, June 6th, and we are going to get started with roll call.
Evening, everyone. Trustee Alvin.
President.
Here.
Here.
Trustee Rex.
Here.
Trustee Spencer.
Here.
Looking at the agenda, I would like to make a motion to alter the agenda and have public comment moved up to Agenda Item Number Two and have the superintendent's report after because we have some special.
We want to move superintendent's report after public comment.
Yeah.
Oh, is that what you said?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. So, in that case, we will go ahead and get started with public comment. At this time, I do not have any public comments.
Well, that was for nothing.
But, no, no public comment, nothing over there, okay. All right, moving on to the superintendent's report.
Speak now or forever hold your peace. That was funny.
I'm going to come to the podium today because I have a few announcements. First, I want to just say that we just had our retirement tea right before this meeting. It was a wonderful event where we were able to honor many of the retirees from the district, all teachers, paraprofessionals, people from our business office, and really just celebrate them for their time here at BPS. I also want to give a shout out to the Beverly Elementary Fifth Grade Choir, and I'm also going to give a shout out to Amelia Zammatt, who was, played the piano for the students while they sang for our retirees. So, it was really, a really nice event. Also, we are in the process of interviewing for the BCS principal. And as you know, we just recently, or today, we're actually recommending our Harlan and Pierce principal. And so, I am going to ask that the Blair Kelso comes up. We are recommending her for Harlan principal today, and you will see that on your consent agenda. We are pleased to announce that Mrs. Blair Kelso will be recommended today for the principal position at Harlan Elementary. She has been serving as principal at Miller Elementary in the Plymouth Canton Community Schools for the past seven years. Prior to that, she served as upper elementary assistant principal and principal in the Charlotte Public Schools for two years. She also worked internationally for four years at the, is it Tassus? Tassus? American School in Switzerland as a teacher, technology curriculum director, and later as the elementary assistant headmaster. She began her teaching career in the Wesley, Wellesley, Massachusetts Schools. And Mrs. Kelso holds a Bachelor of Arts in Education from Boston College, a Masters of Education from Boston University, and she has completed all but her dissertation for her doctorate in K-12 administration from Michigan State. She attended Covetine Middle School and graduated from Seehom High School. We hope that you honor the committee's recommendation to have Mrs. Blair Kelso as our Harlan principal.
Of course. Thank you.
May I first say, welcome back?
Thank you, thank you. I'm so excited to be back. As was stated, I was at Covington and Seehom, and just the phenomenal education that I got while I was there is the reason I came back. And I've always watched and waited for an opening, and so jumped on the opportunity. I'm so honored that I have the opportunity to come back and also bring my family back to Birmingham. I was able to meet all the Harlan teachers on Monday, and it is such an amazing family. And you can tell that they're a family, so I'm really excited to join that team and the Birmingham team as well, so thank you so much.
Wonderful, thank you.
Congratulations, so happy to have you.
I am going to also now ask for Ms. Kate Martin to come up. We are also pleased to announce that Kate, Ms. Kate Martin will be recommended to the Board of Education for the principal position at Pierce Elementary School. Ms. Martin has been serving as the principal at the Gate Magnet School in the Avondale School District for the past four years. And if you don't know, that's the Gifted and Talented Education Program. She actually is also the founder of that school as well. She previously served as two years as the lead gifted and talented teacher at Woodland Elementary in Avondale. Prior to that, she taught elementary middle school in the Fort Mill, South Carolina School District for three years, and taught elementary school in the Charlotte Mecklenburg, North Carolina Schools for four years. Ms. Martin holds a Bachelor of Science in Integrated Science and Elementary Education from Grand Valley State University, and a Masters in Middle Grades Science from the University of North Carolina. She has also completed a principal licensure program at Wingate University and an endorsement in Gifted and Talented Education from Converse College. We hope that you also honor this committee's recommendation to welcome Ms. Kate Martin to Pierce Elementary School as principal.
Yes, all right, thank you, welcome.
Goodness, thank you so much. I am so blessed to be here, and I too got a chance to spend some time at Pierce all afternoon today and walked in every classroom, and it was just so wonderful. I got lots of hugs, so I'm just thrilled, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Congratulations, so happy to have you with us.
I also want to give a shout out to the Seehom baseball team for being district champions. We also, I know Groves did very well at the state meet this weekend, and I feel like I'm missing one more sports team.
Tennis.
Tennis, girls tennis, they are state champions.
Yes.
Seehom, yes, Seehom girls tennis. So, very good weekend for Birmingham Public Schools, and that ends my superintendent's report.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Roberson. All right, trustees, we now will move on to the consent agenda, which does only consist of one item, which is the Personnel Action Report. So, can I get a motion to approve Resolution 90, Acceptance of Consent Agenda?
I move to, oh, go ahead, sorry. I move to accept Resolution 90, Acceptance of Consent Agenda.
Second.
All in favor, raise your hand, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, and that motion passes, and congratulations to our two new principals. Welcome. We hope it's the beginning of a very long relationship. You're both very young, so you have years and years ahead of you. All right.
You don't have to stay for the rest of the meeting if you don't want to.
That's true, you don't. Okay, and now, that brings us to our Teaching and Learning section, and Ms. Imperial is moving up to the podium.
I'm sure you're all very excited about the 140-some page PowerPoint.
Hundred and twenty-one, hundred and twenty-one.
We plan to present all 120 slides this afternoon, I am kidding. But I am joined by a group of educators that have been working through a process that has taken this full school year. And so, I'm just going to do a little introduction and then turn it over to each group as they're going to introduce you to their course. They're just going to give you a high-level overview, give you the opportunity to ask any questions that you might have, and then we'll move on to the next course, all right? So, I'm going to get our PowerPoint going. It's telling me updates are available, so let's hope this works. All right. So, as you are very familiar with, we have an instructional materials framework where we go through four phases to select new instructional materials. We just did that for mathematics. We also have a course development framework. That framework follows a similar four phases. So, when our teachers want to develop or introduce a new course to our course catalog, they begin with research and design, so they seek approval from their principal and their school cabinet. They assemble a leadership team. They collect and review data about the course that they're thinking about offering. They recollect, they also look at stakeholder interest. They draft a course description, a year at a glance. They identify any certification requirements, prerequisite courses, and they talk to their principal about any FTE that might be required for the course. Then they move into Phase Two, which is where they actually begin to develop the resources for the course. So, they develop their curriculum guides that include their Year at a Glance, an overview of each unit. They outline any texts. They ensure that they, the texts they use are board-approved. If they're bringing a new text for approval, they have to be read by two different individuals. They identify any controversial topics and ensure that they're providing a balanced perspective and asking students to think critically about those topics. They then go before the Instructional Council, which is our central leadership team's instructional members. So, myself, Dr. Roberson, Dr. Linnenberg, Ms. Mahler, and I'm going to say Zach because Zach's name just left my, left my last name, left my mind, I'm so sorry, and Zach. And then they go through our Curriculum Council, which they just went through our Curriculum Council, and they had trustee Zammatt and trustee Spencer join us as they took their courses through the Curriculum Council. Then they move on to putting it in the catalog, enrolling the students, implementing the course. So, that's kind of our process, and we follow the same, we watch the course to see how successful students are being in and problem solve when problems arise, just like we do with our instructional materials. So, I'm going to start by bringing up Sarah Seabor. She is a curriculum coordinator on my team that you're familiar with. You know that she leads mathematics, but she also leads world language, so she's going to introduce our first presenters and our first course.
Thank you, I am excited to introduce Josh Dodge and Kiana Washington. They are currently teaching ASL, American Sign Language One and Two at both high schools and have worked very hard throughout the year, this year, to develop ASL Three, which is in high demand. So, Josh and Kiana, if you'd like to come up and share the details.
Hi, everyone, I'm Josh Dodge. I teach sign language at Seehom High School.
Hi, I'm Kiana Washington, I teach at Groves.
And this is ASL Three A and Three B. So, in American Sign Language Level Three, we're continuing the growth of their ASL journey. So, we're going to enhance the receptive skills, which is watching signs, expressive, which is, you know, performing and doing the sign language, and glossing, which is written sign language skills, which a lot of people don't know, but ASL can be written in proper ASL format. And we're going to dive a little bit deeper into that, into that journey for them. The prereqs are obviously ASL One A, One B, Two A, and Two B.
So, our vision for the course is to have the students be able to speak ASL in a more conversational manner and dive deeper into intermediate skills. And they'll also learn more about deaf culture as well as deaf-blind culture.
Our academic goals is to have, develop an intermediate skill level in receptive, expressive, and written ASL. To use those expressive skills to talk about everyday life, cooking, playing games, and conveying multiple meanings such as the words run. Obviously, run has a different meaning depending on how you use it, such as the water is running versus someone's running for president. So, we're going to dive deeper into that as well. We're going to talk about different topics in the deaf community as well as deaf-blind culture in ASL Three A and discuss that as well. In 2018, 2019, the program started when I started at Seehom full-time, and I discussed with parents during Curriculum Night and conferences the need for having more than just ASL One and Two, and many parents were on board and very excited about it from about five years ago. Since 2019, we've surveyed students at both schools, and about 200 or so students have expressed interest over those five years interested in ASL Three.
So, we announced a survey on the BPS E-News. We didn't receive any community feedback, neither negative or positive, so we're assuming that everyone is on board.
Their required teacher cert is ASL K-12 FS cert. We are projecting about 70 students from Groves and Seehom. No additional staffing is required. We will both be teaching a section of Three A and Three B at both high schools. And again, the prereqs are ASL One and Two. These are our units for the trimester schedule. Three A is a review. We'll start with reviewing because a lot of students actually took Level Two their sophomore year, but then their junior year this year, there was no Level Three. And so, their senior year now, they're able to actually take Level Three, so we're really implementing that review. Also, a lot of Level Two students have ended having a gap between this year and the summer and everything, so we, and we're introducing it with a review unit. We're going to go on to Cooking and Units of Measurement, Directions and Games, Discuss Deaf Blind Culture with Haptics and Back Interpreting, which allows the deaf-blind person to know what's happening in the room at all times. So, that's a different type of interpreting that we're going to explore. We're going to look into countries and people around us with different types of sign languages around the world, because there's more than just American Sign Language. Multiple meanings will open our ASL Three B, talk about different meanings of language, situations in everyday life. We're having a book study for the first time in Level Three, where we get to research Aldeffo, a book written by a deaf and hard-of-hearing woman herself. It's written at a more middle-school level, but we're actually discussing the cultural components of that and talking in ASL to discuss the book. So, that's something we're really excited for. The last one is humanities, arts, and current events, such as deaf president now at Gallaudet University in the eighties and different events that surround deaf culture and art as well. And any questions?
That's great, thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
It's exciting.
Thank you.
I do have one question.
Yeah.
So, how many universities have ASL programs that the kids can then go on to study? Or do you know?
Yeah, so it's really unknown because sign language is becoming more and more popular around the United States. A lot of high schools are currently adapting and introducing it. The staffing to find a certified ASL teacher is very difficult right now, especially in Michigan. So, in terms of universities, we know of about four that have ASL recognized as a world language, as a part of an interpreting program, and you can, you know, go on into those careers. I talked to a student about that actually today.
Okay.
Are they in Michigan or is this in?
This is in Michigan. So, there's two community colleges that focus on interpreting, which is OCC, where I went to interpreting school, and Lansing Community College. And then Madonna University and Central Michigan University have either a deaf studies minor or an interpreting program as well.
President Hoekmore, one thing I learned at the council meeting was that having a third year of ASL could help some of our students be on a better footing for college because more and more colleges seem to be requiring three years of a language in high school versus two. So, this would allow them to take ASL and know that they can take all three years and feel a little more confident applying for college.
Yeah, that's wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, so now I'm going to introduce Amy Bowman. You have not met Amy yet, but Amy is our District Department Head for Career and Technical Education, and she's going to be introducing an exciting new CTE program.
Good evening, everybody. How's everyone tonight?
Good.
Good. I am very excited to propose two courses to the board tonight, which would make up our future educators program. So, as April mentioned, I oversee career and technical education in our district, and currently, we have 12 CTE programs within our district. And I won't name them all, but some of them are finance, engineering, mechatronics, marketing, and architecture and design. And those are all offered at Groves and/or Seehom. And then we also send students to Oakland School's Technical Campuses as well, which are CTE centers. So, this program would be offered for at least the first year at Groves High School. So, the vision of our program coincides with the Michigan Department of Education's Grow Your Own and Future Proud Michigan Educator Initiatives. And it's designed for juniors and seniors who are interested in exploring some type of career in education, which of course could be teaching, but it also could be becoming a superintendent one day, school counselor, school occupational therapist, or even an athletics director. So, anything within the realm of education. That's why we decided to call this Future Educators for the program name instead of the more commonly Teacher Cadet is what you hear often. So, collectively, the program, including the two courses, and I will, starting with the next slide, introduce each of the courses, provide students with a really comprehensive overview of the rewards, nuances, and demands of a career in education. And also, most, this is the most exciting piece to most students, allows them several opportunities to experience different types of settings in education, whether that is spending time in a first-grade classroom, a third-grade classroom, a seventh-grade classroom, or as I mentioned before, some of the other careers in education as well. So, maybe if, maybe they want to be a videographer. Maybe they, they hang with JC for a trimester or so to experience what it's like to work within schools and have a different type of job other than what we traditionally think of as teaching. So, the first course is named Future Educators, and this is the course that would serve basically as the, you know, the introduction to education, somewhat as the equal to an Education 101 in a college setting. So, this really introduces students to the key components of education, including what is pedagogy, meeting the needs of diverse learners, introducing them, and they actually have to go through some safety training and an introduction to education policy. And this corresponds with those opportunities to gain experiences, which we are calling field experiences because we're modeling what colleges are calling them now. They will also become familiar with important concepts and approaches that would start them on their journey of acquiring some of those skills and that mindset that it takes to be successful in education, no matter what the position is. And then, they also will have the opportunity, if they're interested, to begin pursuing an industry credential, either the Child Development Associate Credential or the Youth Development Associate Credential. One allows them to work with early childhood students. The other allows them to work with school-age students. The academic goals, this outlines what our Perkins Course competencies are and where those come from. Those are federal career and technical education standards for education general or future educator programs, whatever we would like to call it. So, you'll see some of the things I've mentioned before, health and safety. We also talk about wellness, ethics, professional growth and cultural competencies, strategic partnerships within the district, but also within the community, special populations, diverse learners, and program development. And then also beginning to talk about the different types of development, including social and emotional development, physical development, as well as cognitive development. Some of the examples of stakeholder involvement that we've explored thus far are part of every CTE program. The federal and state governments require us to have advisory committees and to meet with those advisory committees to gain feedback and their insight. So, in the fall, we convened with parents, students, staff, administrators, and some community members to discuss the idea of this program and what it might look like within Birmingham schools. And we took their feedback and then began to write our course descriptions and what our courses would look like based on what the committee shared with us. And then next year, if, pending approval, if the program is approved, we would meet with them at least two times, if not three times per school year. And then the other piece is, we pulled from Zelo, which is the career exploration program that we use. We pulled from both Groves and Seehom to see who was interested in a career in education, and then we sent them a survey to see if they would be interested in enrolling in a course like this if it was offered, and 80% said that they would. So, the required teacher certification to teach within a program like this is. So the required teacher certification to teach within a program like this is a CTE endorsement. And that can either come from meeting the requirements for what we call an ACA, which is an annual career authorization, or they can earn a certification if they would like to go. Like Lisa Donnelly, who you'll meet in a minute, has this certification as well as I do to teach within an education general or this CTE SIP code. So Joe Rusick, who is a current Groves teacher, is slated to teach this class if it's approved. And he would pursue the ACAs, so we can add that to Dean's List. Our enrollment is projected to be one section of this course in the second trimester of next year. So no additional staffing is required and there is not a prerequisite course. But as I mentioned a few minutes ago, it is offered to juniors and seniors. And here's our Year at a Glance, which gives you an overview of how this course would be paced out for students. And I mentioned a lot of those, the unit names prior to, so I won't take the time to read those again. And one last note for this course. The experiences where students would leave Mr. Rusick's classroom in Groves High School to go into their field placements, they would go either one or two times a week for this first course in the series. And are there any questions or would you rather ask questions at the end after the second course is explained?
Trustees, does anybody have a question right now?
I have a question, but I could also ask it at the end. I was just wondering, the Perkins Course Competencies, those are federal standards.
They are.
Now, are those federal standards that we must meet or we have to meet some kind of standards and we've chosen to meet those?
So those are the approved standards for a CTE program.
Okay.
So I'm glad that you asked that question. To have a CTE program, it has to be approved by the state. And we went through that approval process in late fall, early winter. I applied, went through the application process. And it was approved for us to offer the program by the state of Michigan. And with the approved CTE program, we have to offer those Perkins Course competency standards.
Do we know if other districts in the area have a class like this?
So both Lisa and I, coincidentally, actually used to teach this in other districts. She taught it in Clarkston, I taught it in Lake Orion. But other districts that have it are Holly, Chippewa Valley, Dakota. There's a lot in the Oakland County and McComb area. Most of the Oakland County districts, coincidentally, are in the northern end of Oakland County. So we would be first on the southern end to have this program. And it really is growing throughout the state. When we originally taught it, that was eight-ish years ago, ten-ish years ago, it was a very small group of schools offering it in the state. But this, the Michigan Department and Office of Career and Technical Education are really putting a lot of incentives out there and encouraging districts to implement this program due to the teacher shortage that we're experiencing, not only in the state but throughout the country. And there are grants available to help us support this program as well.
Wonderful. Thank you.
All right, let's move on to the next course. So the next course is called Education Careers Field Experience. So again, modeling what college programs are referring to, the terminology that college programs are using. And the program vision mirrors the Future Educators Program vision because these two would be within the same program. The course vision for this is different. So with the course vision for this, the students would spend one day a week with Mr. Rusick at Groves and spend four days a week in the area that they are really, really interested in. So maybe during that first course, they really decided and discovered after doing a few different experiences that they loved kindergarten and that they really wanted to explore kindergarten more. If they're enrolled in this class, they would be able to spend four days a week in a kindergarten setting, being mentored by one of our kindergarten teachers. And in the previous class, they would do a lot of observation, maybe a little bit of tutoring or something like that. In this course, they're actually learning how to lesson plan and how to present lessons. So they wouldn't just be an observer or maybe someone working with small groups. They would have the opportunity, when they're ready, to actually present lessons that they've designed to the classroom that they're working in. Or potentially maybe running a small group if they're interested in being a social worker or counselor. And if they are working with social worker counseling, they would of course be respectful of student privacy and personal information. So they can continue in this course, working if they decide to, towards an industry credential. And they would also begin to really deal with their experiences in education, which they can then take those experiences and those time logs and their portfolios and earn direct college credit once they've completed both courses at several schools within Michigan. As you can imagine, many colleges are contacting MDEs, Office of Career and Technical Education, really seeking partnerships with programs like this because they want our students to attend their programs, their teacher prep programs. So some of the schools offering that direct credit are Oakland University, Wayne State is working on it, Grand Valley, Saginaw Valley, Western, Ferris and CMU. And more are jumping on board with that as well. Because they're seeing that our students know that they are really interested in education. And most of the students from Teacher Cadet or Future Educator Programs throughout the state stay in and complete those programs. So the Perkins Course Competencies for this course cover instructional strategies, lesson planning and classroom management, as well as assessment, the work-based learning, which is the experience part, and career-ready practices. What to wear when you're in the classroom, what not to wear when you're in the classroom. And even some interviewing prep, how to talk with parents, how to talk with colleagues and administrators. And the stakeholder involvement remains the same as the Future Educators course. And then the course outlined with the required teacher certification remains the same. And this one does have the prerequisite of successfully completing that Future Educators class. And then our last slide outlines our Year at a Glance here and the units that we mentioned already on a previous slide. Questions for this new proposed CTE program?
Trustees, anybody have a question?
I don't have a question, but I just think this sounds absolutely brilliant. And I love the connection, the bridge it's going to create from the high school experience to universities. And then I'm just hoping that we can, as these kids exit and go off to the universities, if they can sign some kind of contract that they'll come back
Yes.
and teach in Birmingham public schools.
Yes.
So that we have kids that are groomed, knowing the educational process as a student. And then of course, well-rounded and knowing it as a teacher would be, I hope, not too much to ask.
Absolutely. There are some districts that are offering letters of agreement that once a student completes a college program, that they're not guaranteed a job, but they are guaranteed an interview if it's related, if the position is related to what their degree and certification is in. So we can definitely think about something like that.
Can I ask one question? Under course description, it said that the part of the prerequisites is that you have to, it said transportation to field placement experiences. Does that mean they have to have their own car?
We hope so. If they don't, we do have the benefit of receiving Perkins dollars for CTE programs.
Okay.
So we could potentially use Perkins dollars for busing if we needed to.
Excellent.
Or we also have the benefit of having Midvale and We Care in both of the high schools.
Yeah.
So that could potentially be available if the student is interested in that age level. But you'll also hear the next course proposal relates directly to preschool and offers experience for students who are specifically interested in working with preschool children.
Okay. All right. Trustees, anything further?
No.
Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you so much.
I'd like to introduce Lisa Donnelly. She is our Family Consumer Science and Health and Child Development and Parenting Teacher at Sea Home.
Thank you. Okay. Hi, everybody. So like Amy just spoke about, so I'm going to focus on the younger aged child. So the early childhood education. So I'm at the, my name's Lisa, I'm at Sea Home. And then Abby is my counterpart and she is at Groves. So we have a vision to bring this to Birmingham. So we have a class called Parenting Child Development A. And this is going to be called Child Development B. And what our vision is, is we would like to have this group of students learn all about the preschool-aged child and then push them into the preschool-aged classroom. So this is different than the educators because the educators are going to be elementary on up to about seventh grade or whatever is appropriate. So I'm, we are focusing on the little ones. So in order to take this class, they had successfully completed Parenting A with a C or better. And they should have a genuine interest in working with the preschool-aged child because they are their own beast. So it takes a really special person to be in that room and to work with the teachers. So our academic goals are stated. We're definitely going to focus, obviously, on the human growth and development, cognitive development, intellectual development, social development and the physical development of the preschool-aged child. We did the stakeholder involvement. So both myself and Abby, we polled our students and said, how many of you would like a second class? And ninety percent said that they would love to see a second section of this and they really want to work with children. So we think that's a win. And then regarding the industry, there's such a demand for early childhood educators, especially for going to universal preschool. The demand is, I mean, you can look at our statistics. So hopefully, the same as Future Educators is that our students would be retained to potentially run a classroom when they graduate from college or whatnot and have the experiences and then go in and work for Birmingham schools. There's a lot that they can do. They can be playground monitors. They can do a ton within the district. So this is the outlook for the jobs. And this, there's no additional staffing needing because, needed because myself and Abby, we have both taught these type of classes in our other districts. And we are both going to take a section. I'll have a section at Sea Home and she'll have a section at Groves. And we both have the endorsements. Unfortunately, I didn't move this over, but if you, this would be a second trimester class. So we would start with, you guys can read this as well, but we're definitely talking about the importance of play. Our preschools are play-based and what does that mean to a preschooler because they learn through play? We're going to learn about them, like I said, emotionally, socially, intellectually and developmentally. We're going to learn about like theorists and people that studied children. We're going to do lots of hands-on projects, lots of reflections. And depending on their teacher that they work with, their mentor, they'll be able to also run small group, they'll be able to come up with a lesson. Remember, this is preschool, so it's going to look different. So it's not going to be as strenuous, I guess is the term, for lesson planning. But they will definitely have to plan something and execute it and see, and then do some reflecting. And they'll do a lot of that practice in the classroom, they'll learn how to read to children. So it's probably one of my favorite classes to teach. So does anybody, oops, sorry, I'm going through your slides. Does anybody have any questions for me? Any questions in the preschool class?
Just a comment. This is a great idea and I'm glad it's coming to us. And thank you for doing this.
Yeah, no problem. It's, we're really excited. So we're going to be able to cover all ages. And we can see the benefits that's going to help with Birmingham in the future. So I think this is just a win-win for the district. So we've got our little friends covered and we have elementary covered. And thank you for giving us this opportunity.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
And I realize before I introduce our next presenter, I did not give Amy a proper introduction because Amy is not just our District Department Head of Career and Technical Education. She also leads CFE. She also leads Career Readiness and she also leads K-12 Health. So I wanted to make sure I gave her all the credit that, and in the meantime, she applies for new CTE programs. So she's doing excellent work on behalf of our district. Now I'm going to introduce Bill Pugh. You may know Bill, he's been around for a minute. He is our district's Curriculum Coordinator of K-12 ELA Literacy and Social Studies.
Thank you. Good evening. This is the last course proposal this evening. I'm excited because as you know, both of our high schools have special integrated multidisciplinary programs. Sea Home has had the Flex program all four years of high school for a very long time. And at Groves, there's the Excel program, which has had a year nine, 10 and 11. And so for several years, going way back, I remember Scott Warrow and the whole Excel team was very interested in looking at offering a year 12 program for our Grove students. So I'm very excited to introduce Evan Yee. He's a English, in the English department at Groves High School. And he's also on our Excel team. And he's worked very hard to kind of put together this very innovative year 12 course. So Evan?
Hello, I'm sorry. Hi, I'm excited to be here. My name's Evan Yee. I teach at Groves and yeah, let's go. So it's Excel 12. So the core components that we're trying to focus on is government, psychology and English in an interdisciplinary format. And so if you're familiar with the Excel program, Excel 9 focuses on world history and English. Excel 10 is US history and English. Excel 11 is contemporary global issues and English. And now the Excel 12 would be more domestic, US-based challenges in a modern format with psychology and government and English. And so kind of a way to think about it is us in the classroom discussing what life, liberty and the pursuit of happiness looks like in today's world. And so some of the things we'd use are Harvard developed this Case Method Institute through their business school where they take kind of the historical challenges of our time and frame them as if they're in the present. And as the student reads it, they have to make the decision like, would you have passed the Equal Rights Amendment, given what was going on at the time? Would you have supported James Madison's Federal Negative, which would have given the federal government power to veto any state law that they didn't like? And trying to get them to see it in real time, like how would you have played out in the situation? And then we kind of combine that with what are the psychological components that go into our behavior? As when James Madison talks about factions and how do factions appear on social media as they do, right? And social media offers its own form of democracy, if that makes sense. So this is also kind of a plug for interdisciplinary studies. And so this is kind of like where a lot of our post-secondary institutions are moving. So you can see Dartmouth and Northwestern, they have their own colleges that are dedicated to interdisciplinary learning. Because the problems that we have in our society are not isolated in subject areas, right? They are messy, they are complex. And so this is, this course is almost supposed to repair them for that type of thinking. Of when they're designing a product, it's a variety of things. It's not just psychology. It's how you market through psychology to then develop a product that, you know, achieves this box, if that makes sense. So like I just said, I don't want to repeat myself, but the first half of the course is focused more on the community lens. So what makes a trusting, successful community? What types of government institutions allow that trust to be built? So for example, communities that have public libraries are far more healthier often when you look at the metrics of how you evaluate the health of the community. There's less isolation, if that makes sense. And so the second half of the course is focused on the individual. So as they are an individual who's a senior going out into the world, whatever career you face, you will come across some sort of regulation, some certification, some sort of lobbying, depending on what industry you're in. And so getting to kind of analyze all those components, if that makes sense. And so that said, the goals of the course are pretty much taking rhetorical analysis, right, which we do on a day-to-day basis, and then applying it to government and psychology. That's essentially it. So this has been a, you know, long, intensive collaborative road, starting in 2018, which was the end of my first year with a team of teachers on the Excel program from social studies and English departments. Every year that we've taught Excel 11, there's been, you know, when are we going to have a 12th grade? And so that's kind of where this motivation was born. And so this has kind of been worked through, both the English Social Studies, our principal, Dr. Smith, as well as, as you heard, the Instructional Leadership Council. And so as of this moment, based on, you know, my sales pitches to students, we have thirty-six students that would like to take it next year. And we have had resources available and so far, so good. So that said, the ideal version of this course would have fifty students and there's no additional FTE required. And then the required teacher certification would be English, Government and Psychology. So overall, just jump through the units. As you can see, the first three units have to do with successful communities. And the second three are more focused on the individual. and the second three are more focused on the individual. So, we'd start the year talking about, like, the core foundations of our constitutional republic, right? As well as the psychological factors that kind of work in that. Then, the next second unit would be focusing more on voting, and we'd kind of compare the operation of our democracy to the totalitarian government of a science fiction novel, of Brave New World, if that sort of makes sense. And then, we'd apply that further, right? We just kind of keep building with the third unit of taking our understanding of psychology and government and looking at, like, school board issues that, that they should be in theory engaged in, because they attend a school, and, and, you know, the things that we dictate here often have an impact on their reality. So, how do, like, in theory, right, they would make a proposal at the end of this unit that one of you could read, and written in that style of a formal school board proposal. And then, the second half of the unit is flipping to the individual, as I said. I'm looking at those philosophies and theories in terms of psychology for how to deal with the challenges that most adults face. I mean, there's a, there's this loneliness pandemic that's out there, right? And so, what are companies doing? What are colleges doing to try to support that? And then, you know, moving further in terms of the cultural trends that they say the longest-living communities have, you know, when they say the certain type of diet, how the work-to-life, work balance, but that work-life balance, if that sort of makes sense. And we ask, we'd ask the students, right? Would you want to live in a community like this? And like, "No, I want to live in a big city." But, and then the last unit is more an intentional research project, where they essentially would build their own case study for a specific career field. So, it's kind of similar to what previous presentations have made. But, we're trying to look at it from, like, what are the unique psychological challenges of this field, right? Teaching high school has different psychological factors than teaching preschool, if that makes sense. As well as what types of regulation and certification we need to be aware of, right? What, but, as you know, with becoming a teacher or becoming an engineer, a lawyer, et cetera, if that sort of makes sense. And then, that would all culminate with a formal interview, where they'd kind of sit down with myself and Laura Scheckel, who's my teaching partner, maybe some of you, if you'd like to join us, where they would simulate a formal interview, like, for this position that they, in theory, are interested in. Just because most of our students don't have this sort of opportunity. And so, when they finally get to that interview, they're, you know, ugh. So anyways, this is all just a concerted effort to try to get them to realize the complex realities that await them and to engage in them. So, oh, I didn't know this was going to part. So anyways, just to highlight things real briefly in terms of what makes this interdisciplinary. The first unit is, has them, social capital is the research term that they use for trust. And so, they would analyze a situation in any community where social capital was kind of threatened, if that makes sense, we know. And how that worked, right? How that actually happened? Why it makes sense that this community was challenged in their social capital, looking at the government and psychological components. The second one, and I didn't add this when I was describing it, is that we would ask them to kind of form their own government, like, have them have their own election, where they, you know, vote on officers, and actually have them try to pass a law, like, regarding social media, where they compromise, right? And then, they hopefully realized, hey, this isn't that simple when I, when I think everybody else is wrong and I'm right. And then, the third activity would be them writing a formal proposal, like I said. And the last one would be that interview. So, thanks for the opportunity. Do you have any questions?
This is wonderful.
Yeah.
This is so cool.
Trustees.
Sorry, I was just like, you know, this is in a subject area that I, I love, one that I studied myself. And the first thing I thought of was an equity balance between Sea Home and Groves. So, it's, it's definitely well-thought-out and should happen. And then, I just love the coursework. I mean, this is brilliant. Our kids are so often unprepared going off to college with, you know, taking care of themselves and decision-making. And we pray and hope as mothers and fathers and caregivers that we did a good job. But then, you add into it school, teaching, experiences, curriculum. So, it's just like a very well-rounded, well-rounded education for the kids. I think it's brilliant. Thank you.
Selfishly, I am, I don't know a lot about the Flex program, but personally know about Excel, huge fan. Both kids will do it all four years, so I'm thrilled that this will be available when my son's a senior. So, thank you very, very much to you and then people before you who have put all of the foundation down. And I think just overall, I wish Trustee McKinney were here, because I think so many of the courses that were presented tonight with the education and, and then the early ed, and then this class too, are, Ben, points of pride are things that she has been wanting to see for a while, since she was elected. So, I'm thrilled with the five that have been presented tonight, and I know that she would be as well.
Thank you very much.
Can I ask one question? So, you do not have to have taken other Excel classes to take this as a senior?
No. So, the difference between Excel and Flex is Excel, you can opt in any year. One thing that I forgot to include is that, one kind of sales, I should have included this. But if we are to approve Excel 12, that would allow, we could adopt the AP Capstone.
Yeah, I saw that.
And so, like, in order for them, for a student to have the AP, they say Seminar and Research Certificate, they have to take two consecutive years. So, in theory, they could take Excel 12 and take that one AP class, but they wouldn't get that certificate, if that sort of makes sense. And the AP Capstone, not to keep talking, but it's, it's less, it's been around for a little bit, but it's a more unique program, because it's interdisciplinary. Like, I was, you can look at the participating schools in, in our, in our state. And in our county, it's pretty much mainly just Troy and Rochester and University High at Southfield. So, it's fairly unique, I would say.
Interesting. Okay. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I, can I just make a comment?
Yes, of course.
So, as Ms. Imperial mentioned, I got to sit in on the Curriculum Council meeting. So, I saw all these presentations. They were even more detailed, and they were, they were really well-thought-out. So, I want to just give a congratulations, because everybody that, that has been developing these courses, they've taken a lot of time, clearly, to design a really good course. And, well, the one that we just heard about now, the, or Excel 12, if you go through all of the materials we're presenting, there are a lot of links on there. So, we actually had a chance to go and look at all the materials, excuse me, at a lot of the materials that he's planning to teach. And it, I thought it was a really balanced approach. I was really impressed. So, again, I would recommend voting for all of these courses. I think they're really good ones. Kudos to the team for putting together some really great courses.
Well, since I was going to ask the trustees who sit on the Curriculum Council, if you had anything further to say?
Well, and they were all voted to advance to us with unanimous approval.
Wonderful. Okay.
So, we will be bringing these to you at the regular board meeting to hopefully, June 20th. To hopefully have them approved, and they will be available at our high schools next year. I do just want to, just want to say how lucky I feel to be working with these amazing educators, because they definitely have been working very hard to make sure that they are giving our students the right experiences. And you can see that Evan is already moving on to his next project, which is AP Capstone diplomas, which I think ties very well to our strategic plan to increase advanced placement access for students.
April, just one thing I forgot to ask. Can you talk about, next year, obviously, we're still on a trimester schedule. So, these courses are all planned out for trimester, but I think everybody's already thinking ahead to when we move to semesters, and they're planning their courses. Can you go ahead and just?
Yes. We, actually, as they were developing these courses, because they're developed this year, they developed them knowing they were going into a trimester year, but moving to semester the next year. So, many of these individuals already have, in their mind, where their courses are going to go when they go from a trimester to a semester, or from a semester to a year, whichever happens with any of the courses. And so, next year, we are going to be working on both curriculum mapping, so having our, our departments work together to think about as we extend or shorten this course, where do we need to deepen our learning, or where? And how can we adjust this course so our students still have a rich experience, or maybe a richer or deeper experience? We'll also be working on common assessments across our high schools during our half-day PD sessions. So, they'll be continuing the curriculum work from this year and preparing for semesters all of next year.
Perfect.
All right, wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. That completes our teaching and learning section. And we are moving on to Business Services. Dr. Gistinger is already headed towards the podium.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. And we do have five items for consideration, and I, I'm assuming you're... Starting with the budget.
I'll talk fast.
You don't have to talk fast. This is very important.
Okay, so let's get started with the final amended budget. I know you haven't had a lot of time to look at this, so I was just going to walk the board through the budget. And I know this is going to be on the agenda for our next meeting for the board to approve. So, I am going to start on, if I can get there. I'm old. I need a mouse. I'm going to start on page two. So, our final amended budget, we're expecting $145,981,644 in our general fund revenue. There are a few major increases that were kind of last-minute changes that we were unaware of when we amended the budget in March. So, let's move to that next page, and I will show you what those are. We have new property values, which slightly changed our property taxes. So, we're expecting a little bit more property taxes over our second original, or second amended budget. And we also got, in the state sources, a one-time deposit for MIPSR's reimbursement. And so, if you recall, years back, our employee retirement system was underfunded. And it's a liability of the state, because the state owns our retirement system. But over time, they eventually shifted that liability onto each school district's books, even though it's not our retirement system. And they give us money, and we give it back to them to pay for our retirement, as well as pay down this unfunded liability. Like, it can't get more complicated. And obviously, the state's revenues are higher than what they had anticipated when they had their revenue estimation conference. And so, they have given districts money to turn around and give back to them to pay down ours, I mean, theirs, unfunded liability. So, this is an unusual event. It has not occurred since all of this conversation about underfunding our pension. But, so, our district's share was $7,291,000. So, we'll see that increase in the revenue, but we will also see the increase in our expense as we turn around and give the money back to them through the cost of our retirement.
So, it's really going in and going out.
Yeah. But, you know, you know how we had talked about one time about how a lot of these strange events have warped our comparability from year to year? Well, here is another one, because we probably, well, we haven't seen this before, and we may never see it again. So, that is the changes, the major changes in the revenue. We're anticipating ending up the year with a small shortfall, I also want to continue to redirect the board to the conversation about the gain or loss on the market value of our investments. If you recall, last year, we wrote those down by $1.2 million. I put $107,50,000 in the budget. We've made some adjustments to that, and we think it's going to turn up at minus, about minus 225. And so, we have $1,002,000 from last year, 225,000 from this year. It's continuing to decline. However, eventually, we will reach market value and sell those investments. And so, now, we have like a $1,425,000 artificially deflated operating results because of that markdown in our market value. And again, can it get any more complicated than that? So, let's move on to our expenditures. We are anticipating our final expenditures in the general fund to be $146,163,774. Oh, I also wanted to point out, before I get too far away from the revenue, one more thing, because you're going to need this information when we get to the slide. So, notice here under our state area, where we have per pupil safety grant, Section 97, critical incident mapping, Section 97D, safety and security risk assessment, and our per pupil mental health grant of 31AA. Those are all last-minute funding sources that hit our records in between the previous amendment and this one. And so, you can see that's a fairly significant amount of money, getting close to $1 million. If we have the revenue, we have to show you the offsetting expenditures. So, I will show you where those are in the budget as we move forward. Okay. So, back to our expenditures. And so, the majority of increase in the instruction here, that $8.8 million, majority of that is related to the increase that we have to show for our benefits, because of the retirement that we have to send back to them. So, you'll see that if we move to the next page for where we split it by where we're spending it, we don't have very many changes in our salaries, but that $6.4 million in benefits is due to us having to send the money back that they gave us. And then, purchase services as increase, as well as materials and supplies decrease. That is a function of putting the 97, 97C and 97D into the budget, as well as reorganizing our thoughts about where we want to spend our safety grant and our mental health grant. So, that is a combination. The changes in purchase service and materials and supplies is our new grant money that we're putting in the right spot and where we plan on spending it.
All right. I'm sorry, Dr. Gistinger, can I ask you a question? Are those federal or state grants?
They are state grants.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so then, we move on to how we split our money between function and object code. And so, we've just lined up where expenditures are, kind of an interesting chart, so you can see exactly how and where we spend our money. We get down to the bottom of page seven, and our salary to benefits percentage is 82.5% in salary, and benefits to revenue is 75.7. So, we're spending about 46.2% on salaries and 36.3% on benefits, which is exactly what you'd expect as we are in the business of educating students. After the general fund, I'm not sure how much detail you'd like me to go into, into the smaller funds. I can just leave it to you, or I can cover it for you, if you prefer. What would you, what would the board prefer?
Trustees, does anybody have questions directly related to any of the smaller funds?
No, I don't.
No.
Okay, so that will be up for you to vote on at your next board meeting as our final amended budget of the 2223 school year.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. This is a lot of work.
Yes.[1678.34]
Dr. Gistinger?
Yes.
Tell me, what does this mean then for our fund, our equity? What is it called?
So if you, you can find that amount at the bottom of page three, I believe. Let me just get there. So at the bottom of page three, in the second to last column from the right, we have our fund balance. We started the year with $19,712,507. We expect to end the year with $19,530,377. But again, to recall that that has artificially been reduced because being forced to write our investments down to fair market value. So there's $1,425,000 less in there than what normally would be here because of the two years of having to value our investments at fair market value.
Okay.
Okay. Next, we have Resolution 91, which is contract for golf simulators.
Yes, so we submitted a RFP to purchase golf simulators at both Groves and Seehome High School. We received a number of bids. We vetted the bids, we interviewed the company, and we have decided that we would like to select the golf simulator to be purchased at Groves High School for $111,000, and Seehome at $104,000 for a total cost of $215,000. And there's two at each of the buildings, two per high school. And so the contractor that we are recommending is, shoot, Golf Spot LLC. And they were one of the bidders of the RFP.
Is it weird that it's less at Seehome than at Groves for the same thing?
I think it's probably due to installation, not exactly. The areas are similar.
Okay.
And this, I think we, the bond committee met about this a week, two weeks ago?
Yes.
A week ago?
A week ago.
A week ago. Seems like forever ago. So we did review this in depth with Plank, Marin, Cressa, and Erin Frank, the athletic director at Seehome, came and spoke about it. So we unanimously agreed that this would be a good
addition.
Addition to both Groves and Seehome.
I think, oh, I was going to say, I think it's important to note that when the bond passed, the auxiliary gyms, the auxiliary gyms were designed with space in mind for these golf simulators. So this is not just an add-on to the bond. This is from the beginning.
And bond dollars.
Yes, and bond dollars.
And on a side note, the trees to the north of our property have been planted. We've met with the neighbors several times post-planting, made a few revisions, walked on their side of the fence, our side of the fence. We jumped to their fence by climbing over their wood pile. And I keep my rain boots in my car because you just never know when they're going to want to meet out there. And I think we have satisfied their requirements. So that is really good that we have some happy neighbors to the north side of our property.
Excellent.
I gotta say, my kid and his friends, when I just kind of mentioned the golf simulators, it's like, oh, my gosh, Mom, you gotta sign me up right away. This is so cool, I can't wait to. I'm like, no, 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 dude. You don't get to do this unless you're in an organized setting with a class and.
Yes. Okay, wonderful. Trustees, no further questions?
I think we had such a rich conversation with Mr. Wills and Mr. Smith at the bond that I don't have anything else to add.
Okay. Dr. Gistinger, are you going to do the dashboard?
Actually, I think that's exactly the reason why Mr. Wills is in our audience today. So I will pull this up.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry. We do need to vote on this because you guys need to get it in place, right?
The timing, the timing is.
I move to support Resolution 91, the contract for the golf simulators at Groves and Seehome High Schools.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes.
Five zero.
Good evening, everybody.
Hello.
This is on the simulator. This is one of those where it's actually under budget from what's in the bonds. So to have some dollars leftovers, great, I'm going forward. So tonight, we're here to present our June dashboard update, which again, we've been doing since the initiation of the bond itself. And really, there's four major components to the dashboard that you see up on the screen and in your board packet. On the upper left-hand side is really the breakdown of the $195 million of costs. In the large blue area, that's the construction, again, district-wide. Some of the smaller percentages, 13%, that's technology and security. So again, that's one of those that's very important of a continuation of previous bond efforts. And then buses, design prime, which would be roofing, parking lots, and furniture kind of round out with that 4% going forward. Moving to the upper right-hand side, so again, these are costs complete through May 31st, 2023. So thank you, Dr. Gistinger and your team, for giving me the latest and greatest terms of purchase orders. You'll see the first column there of $195,200, $195,280,000. Again, broken down by the pie chart to the left. To date, the board has committed $116.7 million. So one of the good things we've been able to do with the direction of the administration team and support of the board is actually accelerate several projects to help beat some of that cost escalation that is taking place. Actual approvals to date, about $77.5 million. Tying that back to actual cost to complete of roughly $39.2 million, and then obviously, the remaining forecasted commitments of $75 million. We still have a program or reserve contingency of $3.2 million. So again, that's something that, again, takes a look at something that may be outside the scope, but in the best interest of students, community, et cetera. So again, about $3.2 million there. So the good news is, we are actually within the bond budget. And special thanks to the finance committee and their efforts to really take a hard look at some of those things that are in the 10-year capital plan, which should be done now, what are those that could potentially be considered for later. The five pie charts you see are just really the breakdown of the construction spend. So we've roughly 70% of that $146 million has been spent and encumbered. On the right-hand side, you kind of see that beautiful colored chart that Mr. Smith likes to present. This is really all those current projects in play. So again, all the great work of the principals, the user groups, the administrative team, the leadership team, and the board. There is a lot of work cooking right now going forward. And again, what you see is in construction is in blue, and then what's closed out, again, is kind of tailed off here. So a lot of work to take place in the next six months. What's in design, actually currently in process, is actually the renovations and paving for both Seehome and Groves High School. So as the auxiliary gyms get wrapped up, you know those parking lots definitely need to be replaced. We want to make sure all the trucks are offsite before we take anything relative to new parking lots going forward. BCS, again, renovations, these are all planned for summer of '24. And then Pembroke is getting selective playground equipment, and that's actually Phase Two of summer '23. On the second page of the dashboard, again, just kind of highlights some of the projects completed. So again, you take a look at the stadium sound systems, gym video scoreboards and sound systems, the lighting. Those are some of the first projects really come out of the ground once the bond passed. And then in 2021, a lot of great efforts. Here, what you see now in '22 is a lot of that work in progress. So as you drive by, and you see the auxiliary gyms in construction, there's still a lot of work that's taking place inside the facilities that maybe the community does not see. So on the right-hand side, you see some of those representative pictures of various work going forward. And right now, what you have is derby pool work on the upper left-hand side. Obviously, some plannings, as Dr. Gistinger just mentioned, the plannings on the north property line here at Groves. The auxiliary gyms are really starting to get framed out. In that second row, you can see the indoor track, the auxiliary track over at Groves. And again, it's going to be very similar at the Seehome sites. We talked about the golf simulator spaces. So again, that's really just a highlight of these projects going forward. So at this point, that kind of wraps up the dashboard report. We do work with the district in putting this up on the district's website, like we have done in previous efforts. And so at this time, I'd like to turn it back over to Dr. Roberson, the board, for any questions.
Trustees? Vice President Russ, would now be a good time, do you want to update the board on our roofs discussion at the bond committee? Would now be an appropriate time?
Are we?
We're not voting on it, but just to let them know.
No, I know, I just wanted to see. I mean, sure, we can talk about that during our, and please jump in if you or Lori have anything. We did talk about at the bond committee meeting, engaging in having a roof study done of all of the roofs in the district because the last time that was done, I believe.
2018.
Okay, 2018, before we jumped into the current bond. So engaging in doing, with the same company that did the work previously because we do have a situation at Seehome in the Little Theater where the roof was not identified as an issue prior to this, but now there's some leakage going on at the Little Theater at Seehome. So we just wanted to engage and have a study done to see where our needs are, if they're still the same schools that were identified in 2018 compared to now. So we thought that as a bond committee, that that would be the best course of action prior to fixing roofs and taking money out of contingency funds. And because the bond dollars for Seehome have already been designated for certain projects within the Seehome community. So we want to make sure that we're being cognizant and that every school is getting the money, and we're not taking from one to pay for another.
And the assessment, the cost of the roof assessment would be in a range of, I believe, $60,000 to $80,000.
Which was similar to the 2018. And they actually do visual inspection, as well as core testing, as well as thermal scanning.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
So we'll definitely notify the police that there are people on buildings with, like, visiting goggles looking at the insulation. And it's amazing how fast roofs age within a five to six-year period. So in the 2018 bond, was incorporated into the 10-year plan. And what we tried to do is tackle everything that was in that critical 1A. And so now this is really updating that roof inspection because roofs are a huge component of the district, almost $3 billion square feet of roofing for the district going forward. So that's a great point to kind of re-up that every five to six years and really get the best information possible.
And I think it's the Seehome auditorium because the Seehome Little Theater is the one that had.
Oh, just got redone?
Yeah, it was the pipe burst earlier this year.
Oh, that's right.
And we were asking whether or not it was the same issue, and it's not, it's on the other side of the building with the Seehome auditorium.
Thank you for clarifying.
And wasn't, did we know about BCS leaking before we had this discussion? I mean, was it factored into our bond money for BCS? I don't remember, or was it after that we found out?
In 2018?
Yeah.
I don't remember.
I think it was after.
I do, too.
I think it was after.
I think it happened after. I do, too. So, so just, I guess it proves that we definitely do need the roof assessment program done.
Excellent.
Okay.
That was in their output, thank you, Trustees, of our bond committee meeting last week.
Okay. Mr. Wills, anything else, or?
No, it's just going to be a very, very busy summer. And again, appreciate the support of the administration team and the board to allow the professional teams to keep moving forward. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
These updates on the dashboard are very helpful, I find. I like staying, you know, on track, knowing exactly where the money's being spent, what projects are starting, are winding up, are in the middle of, where the complications are. I find them extremely helpful.
Hopefully, the community does, too.
Oh, I would, I would think.
Yes.
Because seeing, driving by the schools, both of them.
Mm-hmm.
Seeing everything, on the outside only.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, Dr. Gistinger.
Stormwater.
Now we have.
Before we go further, though, I neglected to introduce Josie Petita. I know all of you know her, but she, thank you for saying that the budget was a lot of work because she's the one that did it all.
Thank you, Josie.
So.
Thank you so much.
So in your package, you have this support of the stormwater management plan. I've never worked in a district that was part of a stormwater plan, but apparently, this is something the board needs to approve annually, and it's to agree to be part of the municipal MS4 sewer system. So we're asking the board to approve that as well.
This is one of the exciting things we get to do.
It's right up my alleyway.
Okay, well, trustees, can I get a motion to consider Resolution 92, support of stormwater management plan?
Well, I think that I'm going to have to ask you to consider Resolution 92, which is the support of the stormwater management plan.
I second that.
Excellent. Okay, any further questions or commentary? As Dr. Gistinger said, we approve this every year. I read it, I understood maybe half of it, so.
I just know we do it all the time.
Yes.
We disagree to be good stewards of our system.
So unless anyone has any further questions or comments, all in favor, raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, Motion 92 passes, five, nothing. And that brings us to the last one, the contract for the Groves sneeze guards.
And countertops.
Sneeze shields.
These are shields.
And countertops, I'm sorry.
So we ran an RFP for sneeze shields and countertops, and we got no responders. So we had to rerun it, and we did get one responder, Stafford Smith. They're soliciting $150,726.46 to put sneeze shields and countertops into Groves High School. I originally thought this was part of the cafeteria spend-down plan because, you know, every year, we get a letter that they have excess fund balance. But it's not, this is going to be taken out of our bond.
Okay.
Do we have sneeze shields and count, I mean, at Seehome?
I believe they're being replaced.
Got it, okay.
Do you want to explain exactly where they're going to be placed?
So it's the plastic that goes over, like, the salad bars when students are walking by? So that's what the sneeze shield is. And then the countertops, you know, obviously, are countertops.
Right.
Yeah, we got it. Okay, well, trustees, if there is no further questions?
I move to support Resolution 93, contract for Groves sneeze shields and countertops. Second.
Excellent. Any comments or questions? If not, all in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes, five, nothing. Okay. And that brings us to other.
We just got, oh, go ahead. Is there another? No, I was just going to say, we have graduation coming up Sunday.
I was just going to say that, but that's okay.
Please.
Oh, no, it's all right.
You go right in.
Thank you. No, I just wanted to wish everyone who's being promoted from elementary to middle school, from middle school to high school, and obviously, the high school graduates, many congratulations to them, to their families, and successful careers for those people who are going to college. We wish them the best of luck. Wonderful, beautiful summer for everybody else. And that's about it.
Okay.
I agree.
And Trust, President Hokumar and Superintendent Roberson and I attended the IA graduation on Sunday.
We did.
So congratulations to all of our IA graduates.
I think Birmingham had the most amount of kids from the consortium. We figured about 40.
Forty, forty.
Yep. Very, it was a very nice ceremony. It was at Pine Knob. And it was a little hot at the beginning, but got better throughout. And Dr. Roberson spoke. It was a nice, nice ceremony, and certainly, congratulations to all of our IA graduates. And then we look forward to our graduations for Groves and Seehome this coming Sunday at the Aretha Franklin Pavilion in Detroit. And am I going to get it right?
Eleven o'clock.
Eleven o'clock.
Is Groves.
And then three is Seehome.
And get there early if you want parking. Get there a little bit early.
Oh, yes, and also, Trustee Ajloony and I, as well as Dr. Roberson and several members of CLT also attended the Lincoln Street graduation. And that was.
Oh, I forgot.
Friday?
That was Friday, yep.
Yes, last Friday. And if anyone has never had the pleasure of attending, it was, it's always very touching. We had a prior graduate who came back and sang a beautiful version of Lean on Me. It truly, it brought tears to everyone's eyes. And then all of the kids have an opportunity to speak and tell their story. It's one of my favorite things, so a lot of good stuff.
Oh.
Go ahead, you got to say one.
I was just going to say, and former trustee Adrian Young has gone to this graduation since the first day of her tenure as a board and showed up again this year just because it is so impactful and something that just makes her feel that everything she's done has been, you know, culminating in the testimony of these kids. And I can't, you know, I've gone, I've only missed it maybe twice in my tenure. And like you said, it's one of my favorite events to attend. And I just feel so incredibly proud of these kids.
And I was just going to say, I also attended the early Oakland Schools, early college graduations. So we had three students from Birmingham who graduated with their associate's degree in the early college program, so.
I just wanted, since I wasn't at our last meeting, to recognize the Birmingham Youth Assistance for, I think it was their 19th Touch a Truck at Bingham Farms earlier in May, and that's one of their big fundraisers. I had the opportunity to visit Harlan, both for dancing with the Stars and then the BEA recognizing Heidi Smith as Teacher of the Year. recognizing Heidi Smith as Teacher of the Year, so that was a great opportunity to go to Harlan. Twice in a week, trustee Spencer and I were both there for Heidi's surprise recognition, so that was great. And then I had an opportunity to go to Berkshire a few weeks ago and participate in their first-ever Amazing Shake for seventh-grade students, where they go through, I believe it's twenty challenges about learning how to, to give a firm handshake, to look people in the eye, interview skills, soft skills.
Thanks.
Denise Jaloki brought this to Berkshire. Her daughter participated in it at Notre Dame Prep. It was amazing. Seventy students went through, and they did these challenges, and then they narrowed it down to the top five, and their prize was to go to a fancy restaurant. So to get dressed up and go, so...
That's so cute.
Definitely an opportunity for a BEF grant in the future, so if you are invited next year, trustees, I highly recommend. I literally took a half a day off of work to go and do it, and it was well worth it. So kudos to Berkshire.
Great. All right, well, I love all those updates, and if we have nothing else, then can I get a motion to adjourn?
I have motion to adjourn.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
And we adjourned at seven-twenty-eight.
Good job.